Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to City Council Meeting. Really grateful to have everyone here this evening. I'd like to go ahead and start our evening by inviting Denise to give her roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick?
Here.
Mayor Ashley Smith?
Here.
Before I welcome Greg Swearingen to give our invocation, I would like just to make an acknowledgement of the passing away of our former Commander Husky today. And so just wanted to take that moment to recognise that and the service that he gave Canyon City and that our hearts and our sorrows are with his family at this time. All right, Greg, if you wouldn't mind saying a prayer for us and also for the Husky family as well, we would sure appreciate that. Please rise.
Lord, we do lift up the Husky family during this time, Lord. We pray that you help them grieve well, experience all their emotions, Lord, and that they would come near to you. We just ask for blessings on that family. Lord, we're just so grateful for the council and we just pray for wisdom and direction and guidance. We're so thankful for the city we get to live in. We just ask for prosperity and rich blessings on it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, I'm going to pass a letter. If you're willing to sign it, this is for the Future Farmers of America, who helped put on the Future Friday this last Friday for the 150th anniversary and they were part of the organisers. And it's a thank you for them. Next, I would like to invite an amazing citizen of Canyon City, and that's Avani Meek to come and address City Council.
Hi, I'm Avani Meek. I live at 306 Griffin Avenue. I have a concern about the ducks on Fourth Street. They are constantly crossing the road and I'm scared about them getting hit by a car. That's why I'm here today. I would like you to please consider putting up a sign on Fourth Street. Thanks for letting me be here today.
Thank you, Avani. So you would like to have a sign, a duck crossing sign on Fourth Street? By the duck park?
Yes.
That's a wonderful idea. Tammy, do you think we could reach out to Rex and see and Kim and see what the possibilities of having a duck crossing sign would be?
Yeah.
On Fourth Street?
We'll follow up on that.
Yeah. We love our ducks at Centennial Park and thank you for looking out for them and being engaged as a citizen of our community. Well done.
Nice job.
Do we have any council member announcements? Councilmember Smith?
I just have one. I spent the weekend in Garden City, Kansas with baseball. Unfortunately, my team fell a little short, but our 13 and under Canyon City Tigers did win the entire thing. So, congrats to the 13 and under.
Way to represent. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. A couple of things. Tomorrow evening is the regular monthly meeting of the Community Advisory Group for the Cotter Mill Superfund Site. And so just contact me by email if you're interested in getting connected. It's, we continue to do the meetings online by Zoom and the public is welcome and encouraged to attend those meetings. I'll mention briefly too, and I don't know, Mayor, if you want to say more about it, but the mayor and I met and Tammy Nordike met with folks with the County Fire District and Police Chief Schick this afternoon to begin some discussions about what we can do to not only increase awareness of wildfire risks, but things that folks can do around their own properties and also the importance of signing up for what's called the Everbridge System so that you'll receive emergency alerts, whether it's fire or any other kind of emergency. So those discussions will continue on.
Thank you. Seeing no other announcements, we'll move on to recognitions and proclamations and like to invite Ashley Sack to come present about Kids to Parks Day.
Good evening. I am Ashley Sack. I live at 1008 Beach Avenue. And this weekend is very exciting if you work in public lands or if you love the outdoors. It is Colorado Public Lands Day, so there are events happening all over across the state to help clean up our public lands or to encourage folks to utilise them, et cetera. But it also happens to be something called National Kids to Parks Day. So I think this is a fun juncture of the two holidays, if you will. So far is hosting a family hike out at Point Alta Vista. And if you remember, I think I, I think I remember it was one year ago on Saturday that we opened the Point Alta Vista Trail to the public. And if you were there, it was an incredibly wonderful, especially during that time period, a wonderful day. And it surprises me every day how many folks still don't know about that trail and don't know all about a lot of our trails in the community. So we are really excited to host this family hike, really for anyone, not just folks with little people. They can have, it can be for anyone who wants to come along. But I do want to thank the council for recognising this as National Kids to Parks Day. Obviously, none of us are doing this for necessarily just ourselves, right? We're all doing this for the next generation and our kids are the ones who are going to be the next generation of stewards and trail and outdoor recreation users. So thank you for recognising this day. I do want to mention that we also won a grant for Canyon Exploratory School, the Wanderers Community. All 66 of them will be visiting Point Alta Vista on Thursday. And we received a grant from the National Parks Foundation to fund that field trip, so it is absolutely no cost to the kiddos. And we'll be taking them out there and doing some stations and educating them a little bit about geology and our watersheds, history. We're going to be using this fancy book. It's like a passport to adventure. I don't know if you've heard of it, but it's pretty cool. So we'll hand those out to the kiddos as well and just hope that they enjoy and share that, that place with their, the rest of their family. And I also have gifts. I love come bearing gifts, so I have some little presents for you all. It is the 75th anniversary of the placement of the USGS Geological Survey Marker on top of Fremont Peak. Anybody been to the top of it? Okay, yay. It's beautiful. And as you know, Royal Cascade, the newer trail that you all just funded and opened, goes all the way almost to the top of that peak, so it's a little bit more accessible to folks. So I have for you some keychains that commemorate the 75th anniversary of the placement of that marker. And I just want to say again, thank you for your investment in our public parks and our trail systems and our community in general. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashley. Well, I like that motto. Everyone's a winner who gets off the couch. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just with the mention of the new trail, I was hoping you could remind us, when, when is it that we aren't allowed to go up there because of the bighorn sheep? Because I think that's coming up.
Yes, and not so much because of the bighorn sheep, but because of the ewes and the lambs. So June and July, the trail will be closed completely. So no one should be up there. And as I mentioned on my post, if I see your Strava segment, you get no stickers from me for the rest of your life because that is a violation of a promise we made to Colorado Parks and Wildlife that we would help protect the lambs and the ewes. I don't know if any of you have had a child or have someone in your life who has had a child. Feeding that child is difficult of your own body enough without running around expending extra calories. And essentially what we're doing if we're on that trail during the lambing season is we're causing those ewes to run around and expend extra calories. And especially because this is such a dry year and there's not going to be a lot of forage for them, it's going to be very difficult for them to make up those calories. So it'll be harder for them to feed their babies and we really want to be careful of those vulnerable populations especially. So it'll be closed June, July, open back again in August. And then I believe it's September, October, it's open only from nine to five. So if you can't remember that, just sing a little Dolly Parton ditty in your head, open nine to five during the fall time.
And that, those restrictions are just for the Royal Cascade?
Just Royal Cascade, yeah.
Everything else is open?
Correct, yes. Just for Royal Cascade. Tunnel Drive is open as always. The Royal Gorge Park Trail is open as always. But that's just such a pristine area that we want to allow those ewes and lambs and of course the lambs also to enjoy some time without hikers and bikers on that trail and runners.
Awesome. Well, we're going to read a proclamation. And we always like to have the whole council participate in that. So this, for this moment, we'll start with Councilmember Tracy and we'll work our way down.
Office of the Mayor proclamation, Kids to Parks Day, Saturday, May 21st, 2022. Whereas May 21st, 2022 is the 12th Kids to Parks Day organised and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May and?
Whereas the Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands and waters and?
Whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle, to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension and hypercholesterolemia. And?
Whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors and?
Whereas Kids to Parks Day will recognise the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors and?
Now therefore, Ashley Smith, Mayor of City of Canyon City, Colorado, does hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Parks Day in the City of Canyon City, Colorado, and urges all kids to get out and enjoy the outdoors.
Dated this 16th day, May 2022. So congratulations and thanks for all that you do.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Is it too much to ask for a photo?
Oh, sure. We like to do lots of photos. Next, we have Police Week proclamation. I'd like to invite Chief Schick up. Your officers or commanders are welcome to come up as well. Would you like to address council before we read the proclamation or?
Well, I just want to take a moment to say thank you for recognising the significance of this week by proclamation. It means a great deal to the men and women of Canyon City Police Department. This is, this is a, a, a time of year where we, we look to pay our respect and honour and remember our fallen brothers and sisters. It's a very special week for us. Unfortunately, we have over 24,000 names on the wall in DC and regretfully I get alerts weekly that keep adding names to the wall. So I'm really happy that the city has, has just dedicated itself to continue helping this PD in its pursuits forward. This is a big part of it. And I also want to say thank you very much for recognising Steve Husky, Commander Husky's role within the PD, his, his sacrifice and service to this community and our nation as a military veteran can't be overstated. He was a remarkable individual.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to all of our commanders and officers that are here tonight. Unless we read this proclamation, we'll start with Schmisher this time. I'm going to skip again just because I still cannot talk with my allergies.
Office of the Mayor proclamation, Police Week, May 15th to the 21st, 2022. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated National Police Week annually since 1962 and?
Whereas the members of the Canyon City Police Department and other local, state and national law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of their citizens and?
Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies and that members of these departments recognise their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception, oppression and intimidation, and by continually operating in the spirit of service excellence and?
Whereas the members of the Canyon City Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service.
Now therefore, Ashley Smith, Mayor of Canyon City, does hereby proclaim this week, May 15th to May 21st, 2022, as Police Week in the City of Canyon City, Colorado, and urge all citizens of the City of Canyon City and all patriotic, excuse me, patriotic, civic and educational organisations to honour the men and women of Colorado who play a critical role in protection and preservation of life and property with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their duty have rendered dedicated service to our community and in doing so have established themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights, safety and security of all.
All citizens of the City of Canyon City and all patriotic, civic and educational organisations are further called upon to observe Sunday, May 15th, 2022 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honour of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or been seriously injured in the line of duty. 601 peace officers were killed in the line of duty in the United States in 2021, including nine in Colorado.
The City of Canyon City recognises and honours the police officers for their service and sacrifice, dated this 16th day of May, 2022.
Thank you again. We sure appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. And I'd just like to ask the community, if they see an officer this week, go up and, and have a conversation with them. Thank them. That, that really, it fills their soul. These, these men and women don't come out here for the pay. They come out here to help people. So a little bit of recognition for that goes a long, long way. So I just encourage folks to go out, strike up a conversation. Next week, we got Coffee with a Cop, so come out and see us and, and meet your PD. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Schmisher and Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick for coming out to our first annual candlelight vigil. We livestreamed from DC last Friday night at Grandview Church. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
And time and place for Coffee with a Cop? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Rollers, nine o'clock, I believe it is next Thursday. So it's on our, it's on our social media page.
I, I just have one quick question though. Since it's at Rollers, is there going to be any room for any of the citizens to be there?
Well, that's a fair question, Councilman. Fair question. Thank you again, all.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to see you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Tammy, I'd like to turn the time over to you now to go over our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 6A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting, May 2nd, 2022, and the general government meeting, May 4th, 2022. Item 6B is to accept the estimate from Smith Bourne LLC for the mural of Old Mose. Item 6C, accept an artwork easement with Aaron, I cannot pronounce the last name, at 301 Main Street. Item 6D, authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Convergent Technologies LLC. Item 6E, amend award for bid 13-22 by $2,250 per vehicle. Item 6F, award bid 3422 for magnesium chloride to GMCO Corporation in an amount not to exceed $11,900. Item 6G is to authorize declaration of surplus equipment and disposal in accordance with city policy. Item 6H is the monthly budget summary for March of 2022. Item 6I are the cash disbursements from May 4th, 2022 to May 16th, 2022, and the P card disbursements from March 18th, 2022 to April 19th, 2022.
Thank you. I would like to go ahead and invite Aaron, and your wife can come up too if you wish. Oh, okay. That's all right. Aaron is the property owner of where this proposed mural is going to go and would like to give you an opportunity to address council. But also I wanted to say thank you for your willingness to have a partnership with the city. As the 150th Committee, kind of been serving as an art committee, wanting to have some long lasting murals go up to celebrate Canyon City's anniversary. It's actually, it was actually really hard to find property owners willing for us to pay to put a mural on their building. And Aaron has been totally awesome in just coming to the table, not only being willing to put a mural, but also making personal investments to match that investment. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay. So my name is Aaron. Last name is pronounced Maleko. My wife Tammy and I live at 310 Macon Avenue and we own the building at 301 Main Street. The front of that is leased out to Yarned and Dangerous. We bought that building in 2018, I think it was. And we've put a lot of work into it. Remodeled all the inside and I think that corner is, is going to be a hot corner. And I was really happy to be able to be involved in the mural project and have an opportunity to do that. So we do have an application in for that. And we are putting, putting up some of our own money and some of our own resources and as well as lodging the artist while he's here from Grand Junction at our place. So just wanted to say how glad I was to have the opportunity to participate and just be available if you had any questions for me.
Councilmember Tracy?
My questions are in regard to different items.
Okay. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Maleko, I'm not sure if this question is more appropriate for you or for Acting City Administrator Nordike, but I was a bit concerned with the artwork easement just because it is requiring that the city maintain the artwork in good condition and make all necessary repairs to the artwork in a timely manner. I just wanted to make sure that we had a sense of what the estimated cost of that would be.
That cost is unknown. We will not know what any repairs would need to be in the future. It could be damaged from wind, hail, rain. So it would, and it would basically be repairing the mural. So I'm assuming that it would be damaged paint chips and those type of things.
Probably the most likely damage would be potential vandalism. And so part of the 7,500 that we've budgeted for is actually for a layer of UV protectant. It's called a sacrificial coating. So if there is vandalism, that can, that mural can still be cleaned and saved. And it was in, it was put in on the city side because when we made the mural agreements with the other property owners, we didn't require for them to be responsible for maintenance. So it didn't seem fair since we had to come officially to City Council for this particular one because it's over the $6,500 threshold that we would make them do it when we didn't make anybody else do it. So something we'll need to think about in the future for other.
Is it, is it a safe assumption? I just never like signing a blank check on behalf of the city. Is it safe to assume that it wouldn't be more than the 7,500 that it costs?
Yeah, I, I would, hopefully there'll be zero monies towards it. Yeah, go ahead.
Most of the vandalism occurs in the alley. We don't see really anything up front. We are, we're, we're going to add additional cameras up front, but that's such a visual area. It's not just a popular area. It's, we've never had that front vandalised. As the mayor said, it's going to have a sacrificial coating on it, which, you know, you can clean graffiti off fairly easily.
And that costs $300. So if we would have to do another sacrificial coating, I would imagine it'd be nuts.
Right. And then if there was any maintenance to the, as I was saying earlier, if there's any maintenance, we're going to have the paint codes. We can touch up paint. Since the artist is coming from Grand Junction, we're not going to let, have him drive down here to touch up paint. That's something that we'd be able to do.
It's just a five-year contract.
It'll be a nominal.
So my, I guess my other question is about that, it being a five-year contract. Do we know, it says the easement shall terminate upon the grantee's permanent removal of the artwork. Do we know how much that would cost to have it permanently removed if it needed to be?
Well, we have yet to have any mural permanently removed, probably in the City of Canyon City. So.
I would assume it's just painting over it, you know. But I mean, there's a mural there now, really.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a little plain sheep with the yarn and all that. That was what, a $250 mural or something like that?
Okay.
And so it's, it's about to be removed because we're going to paint over it. So that's.
So permanent removal, I just want to make sure that there's a clear understanding. It can include just painting over.
Yeah, it's, it's just paint over stuck on.
Oh, wonderful. And thank you as well. It's really exciting to see the, the mural that's already gone up and to have another one on the other end of town. Thank you for your willingness. Really excited about the project.
Are there any other questions? I will say, just, you talked about this is going to be a hotspot. That, to go a little bit further, is this is the location where there's going to be some Main Street improvements, hopefully next year, as well as clock tower improvements. And so it's really going to complement those clock, that clock tower plaza and that revitalisation of that area of town. And it's super exciting.
Yep.
Okay, well, we're going to go, move on to other questions from council. Councilmember Tracy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had brief questions in regard to items 8E and 8H. In regard to 8E, which is an amendment to a bid award, increasing the cost of vehicles. And I just wonder if we have any idea about whether that could happen again before we actually get these vehicles that are now, I guess, going to be 2023 models. So I don't know if any city staff know or not whether that could happen again.
As far as we are aware, this is the only time that that will increase for these particular vehicles. And that cost did come, that cost increase came straight from the manufacturer.
Thanks.
I really hope that you can find that crystal ball that lets us know what the economy is going to be like.
My, my question in regard to 8H was just the sales tax collects, sales tax collections and the 2A sales tax collections. I, I know. I, I noticed that they're over budget, over the budgeted amount, but under what was collected for the comparable month, March of 2021. And I just wonder if we know why that is.
No, not in particular. One thing. Sorry. Last year was the first year we went state-collected. And so we had a lot of vendors last year that were remitting for prior year taxes that were included in those months of revenue as well. So that can attribute to, to those variances.
That's all. Thanks.
Any other questions from council? Well, Amy, Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had two questions. One is on 8D, authorizing this city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Convergent Technologies. I noticed that the letter is dated March 18th and that the pricing is only valid for 30 calendar days. I wasn't sure if Director Owens was able to speak to that.
Good evening. So the, the quote cover sheet that was attached to that as part of the scope services is superseded by the language that's in this agreement. So the pricing will still be valid even though it does state 30 days on that cover sheet.
Thank you so much. I had one additional question, not for, not for you though, Elijah, on 8G. I wasn't sure, Tammy, I know with regard to the dis, well, actually, it still has to, it still has to do with IT equipment. So maybe it is. But with regard to potentially letting the community agency funding organizations know that there may be some IT equipment that's available. I wasn't sure if you wanted to, what your plan was for that for this year, Director Acting City Administrator Nordike? Or if you wanted to just share a little bit about it now?
So what we can do, we do have the list of applicants that applied for 2022 funding. And we can either email them or, you know, we do have their phone numbers and addresses. We can send them an invitation to, to say that those items are available. When we are looking at our 2023 funding, we can see if there are items that they might be potentially looking for. So then we could have a list, so next year when we do our surplus, that that would already be available. We'd know who to reach out to.
That's a great idea. I guess just for, for the public's awareness, part of this, and please correct me if I get this wrong, but part of the city's disposal policy for IT equipment that is no longer of use to the city is that community agencies, that receive community agency funding can, if they have noted that they have a need for such items, take advantage of, of that surplus or take advantage of those items that are no longer needed by the city.
That is correct. And this is the first time we're actually doing this under this, this policy. We have not been able to do it in the past.
I hope it goes well. Hope it's well received. Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to, Elijah, that you'd like to add?
No, not really. Like, like Tammy said, this is the first time we've been able to enact this policy. We tend to decommission older equipment throughout the year and have an E-waste pickup of any equipment we need to dispose of once or twice a year. We feel that it's better if the equipment isn't completely unusable to donate to some of those local agencies in case they have a need for them. So we do hope it's well received as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I was just going to propose a motion if there's no more questions.
Let's do it.
All right. Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammerick?
Aye.
Thank you. Tammy, do you have an administrator's report that you'd like to offer?
Yes. In your packet, you did receive the administrator's report. I would like to add one item that we did mention that camp, the camp spot was completed with IT. I would also like to mention that our PIO, Kristy, played a significant role in getting Camp Spot and Cardpoint, which is the credit card processor, up and running as well. So she had a lot, she had a lot to do with that reservation system. So I just want to make sure that everybody was aware of that as well. And then also, the museum will be closed tomorrow in order for staff to have training in Colorado Springs. And that concludes the administrator's report.
Any questions for Tammy? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Acting City Administrator Nordike, I was wondering if you could share, just so that we begin to raise public awareness about the fact that we will likely be considering an ordinance soon from the Water Department with regard to accounts that don't test for backflows. I understand that those are commercial accounts, but I was wondering if you could just share a bit more about that so that it's on folks' radar screen. Thanks.
So currently, the city is required to have the local businesses have their backflow presenter, black, back? Flow.
Preventer.
Preventers tested. Thank you. And we do not have high compliance with that. So we are looking at doing a, an ordinance that will actually put a fine on, on the businesses. Right now, our only means of, of dealing with it is to disconnect their water service.
So can I just clarify that? We do have criminal penalties. I think what the Water Department Director is maybe looking at is administrative fines. We can take them to court and penalize them or disconnect their water, as, as Ms. Nordike mentioned. So we're looking at adding potentially an administrative fine section. So we're working that out with Cam and Travis.
Can you, for the benefit of the public, also elaborate why we have to have this requirement made? It's, it's not, it's not because here at city council, we're like, this is what we need to have happen in Canyon City. It's coming from state directives.
Yeah, it's part of, it's regulations promulgated by CDPHG requires backflow preventers and testing of them. I don't know if I can answer the scientific question as to why we all like backflow preventers. I apologize. It's not my knowledge base, but.
So maybe from, yeah, for the education of those that, those commercial property owners, that would be helpful.
I bet Mayor Pro Tem Hammerick could, maybe.
Actually, I just, I deal with it on a yearly basis, having a business on Main Street. It's, it's kind of a painless process. I think it takes 15 minutes. It costs 70 bucks. It's not a big deal. They come in, you have to schedule an appointment with somebody like Johnny's Plumbing or Big Cat or somebody comes in, they test it. It's, it's relatively painless. And it is, for me, it's paid for by my leasur. So I don't even have to deal with it as a business owner.
And the, the reason, the reason there's backflow prevention regulations is that if there's, if there's a failure in the city water system, the city doesn't regulate the private water systems of businesses or houses. And so if there's a failure of the water system, essentially, you, the, the pressure that exists in the business can force that water back into the city system, potentially carrying contaminants or biologics. And so that's, that's the reason for backflow prevention so that the, so that it doesn't affect the health and safety of the population at large if there's such a condition.
And I'd like to point, I did have a commercial property owner show me a picture of a letter that the city had sent out saying, you know, you need to do this backflow testing. And they're like, here's another example of how Canyon City's not being business friendly. And so maybe in future letters, it would probably be really good to say, this is mandated by the state of Colorado. And that we do, we, as a city, have penalties if we don't enforce it.
So a little more explanation as to like, why this is, this is a requirement and why it's important is what you're asking for? Sure, we can pass that along.
It's one of those things where we, we don't have a say in the matter.
We just need to point the finger somewhere else.
Yeah, it's a good policy, but let's, let, that. All right. Any further questions? And move on to item 8A, and this is a second reading and adoption by title-only ordinance 11. And this is concerning the Canyon City's municipal code concerning harassment. And Catherine, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you. So as the mayor and council is aware, the Colorado Supreme Court just struck down a portion of the state's harassment statute as being overbroad and vague. The portion that the court struck down is the intended to harass language. And the city's code has the same language. And the effect of that decision by the Colorado Supreme Court is that we need to amend the code to conform with that decision, and that's what this ordinance does.
Any questions from council? I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance 11, series of 2022, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammerick?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. This adjourns our meeting for tonight.